The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Welcome, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight for the public hearing for the Project Development and Environment, or PDNE, study for Old 41 County Road 887. The limits of this study are from US 41 in Collier County to Benita Beach Road in Lee County. My name is Joanna Weaver, and I will be the online moderator. Tonight, FDOT is conducting the in-person hearing at the City of Benita Springs Recreation Center. Thank you for attending the live online option. We will be starting the formal hearing momentarily. Before we join the in-person hearing, we would like to review the GoToWebinar control panel. This is located on the right-hand side of your screen. If it is minimized, click on the orange arrow at the top to open it up. If you would like to make a formal comment tonight, please type your name, organization if you are affiliated with one, and address into the questions pane at the bottom of the control panel. Once you are asked to unmute to speak, you will click on the microphone near the top of the control panel and turn it green. You can enter your request to speak at any point in the hearing tonight. If you are joining us by phone this evening, you will see the panel at the bottom of your screen. If you are on a tablet, it will be at the top. If you would like to request to speak, please click on the question mark icon, and it will open the field to type in your name, address, and organization if you are affiliated with one. If you happen to have any technical difficulties, please visit support.goto.com for help. In a moment, the FDOT project manager, Stephen Andrews, will begin the hearing. Once the hearing has been opened, the project video will play, followed by a short intermission. We will then move to the in-person comments or testimony, followed by online testimony. You will hear the comments from the in-person hearing just as the in-person attendees will hear comments from online attendees. We will begin the hearing momentarily.
About to start the hearing, if everybody please take a seat, please. All right, good evening, everyone. The Florida Department of Transportation welcomes you to the public hearing for the Project Development and Environmental, or PDNE, study for Old 41 County Road 887. I'm Stephen Andrews, and I am the FDOT project manager. And thank you for attending this event in person or online. Here with me tonight are FDOT representatives and the members of the consultant project team to answer any questions. We would like to thank any elected officials for your attendance and participation in this hearing. We encourage you to sign in with your name and the office you represent for the project record. Tonight, we will show a project video which will explain the project in detail. Following the video will be a 10-minute intermission. Finally, we will open the formal comment period, where you will have the opportunity to provide statements at the microphone, or you may provide your comments directly to the court reporter, or in writing. Thank you for attending either in person or online. With spoken statements, we will start the in-person comments, then hear any comments from online attendees. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to present the proposed improvements and share all analysis conducted to date. It serves as, it also serves as an official forum for the public expression, public to express their opinions regarding the proposed improvements, as well as the potential impacts on the human and natural environment. We hold public hearings so that you can hear your views, so we can hear your views and comments. It is important that you express your views at this stage, when the flexibility still exists to incorporate those views into the study documents. Final decisions are made using these documents. Now we'll read the following information for the record. This is the public hearing for the Old 41 County Road 887 PDNE study from US 41 in Collier County to Benita Beach Road in Lee County, Florida. Financial project ID number 435110-1 and 435347-1. This public hearing is being conducted by the Florida Department of Transportation with the Office of Environmental Management as the approving authority. It is being held at the Benita Springs Recreation Center. The address is 26740 Pine Avenue, Benita Springs, Florida, 34135 at 5:00 PM. This project is described as a PDNE study to evaluate and document potential in potential engineering and environmental effects of widening Old 41 and adding a new quadrant roadway at Racetrack Road. The limits of the proposed improvements from the US 41 in Collier County to Benita Beach Road in Lee County. The hearing is being conducted in accordance with all state and federal laws, as well as the Americans with Disability Act of 1990 and Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and related statutes. It is being conducted to all applicable executed orders. For a listing of these regulations, please see the hearing display boards here tonight or on the project webpage. If anyone feels they have been discriminated against, they may complete one of the forms located at the sign-in table and mail the complete form to the address listed on the display board. This information is also available online at www.fdot.gov/equalopportunity/TitleVI. At this time, we will play the project video.
Okay, welcome to the Florida Department of Transportation's Public Hearing for the Old 41 Project Development and Environment, or PDNE, study. We appreciate your attendance and participation. This public hearing is being conducted to give the public the opportunity to review and provide comments on the proposed preferred alternative and associated effects on the social, economic, cultural, natural, and physical environment. The purpose of this PDNE study is to evaluate engineering and environmental data and document information that will aid FDOT District 1 and the FDOT Office of Environmental Management, or OEM, in determining the type, preliminary design, and location of proposed improvements. The study begins at US 41 in Collier County and extends approximately 2.73 miles into Benita Beach Road in Lee County. The department proposes to expand the roadway to a four-lane divided roadway with 11-foot travel lanes and to create a new roadway to connect Old 41 with Racetrack Road. Proposed improvements will integrate multimodal transportation opportunities through the addition of sidewalks, bicycle lanes, and shared-use paths. This project is off-system, which means transportation improvements are being studied on roads that are not a part of the state highway system. Through the local agency project program, future phases of this project will be completed by Collier County and the City of Benita Springs. Proposed improvements are needed on Old 41 in order to relieve existing congestion and accommodate future travel demand as a result of projected population and employment growth in the area. Other goals of the project include supporting increased industrial and residential development in the area and improving safety conditions for bicyclists and pedestrians. Within the project limits, Old 41 is a two-lane undivided major collector with a posted speed limit of 45 miles per hour. The travel lanes along the roadway are 12 feet wide. There is a 12-foot center-turn lane available at various points throughout the limits in Collier County. There are limited sidewalk facilities within Collier County, and currently there are no designated bicycle facilities within the project limits. Within Lee County, Old 41 is classified as a major collector and consists of a two-lane undivided facility with a center-turn lane. Like the Collier County segment, the two travel lanes along the roadway are 12 feet wide, and there is a 12-foot center-turn lane available at various points throughout the limits. There are limited sidewalk facilities within Lee County, and currently there are no designated bicycle facilities within the project limits. Old 41 is an important facility for commuters as well as freight traffic, given the number of residential subdivisions and industrial parks present along the corridor and due to the roadway's access to major transportation facilities. Throughout this PDNE study process, FDOT has looked at many different concepts to widen the existing two lanes of Old 41 to four lanes, as well as a potential new quadrant roadway at Racetrack Road. After environmental and engineering analyses and public and agency comment, many of these alternatives were eliminated. The last public workshop was an Alternatives Public Workshop held on April 14th and April 19th, 2022. At that workshop, we asked for your opinion, your input on proposed improvements, and based on your comments and additional environmental and engineering analyses, a preferred alternative was selected. The preferred alternative was designed based on the traffic congestion and future population growth. From US 41 to the new quadrant roadway, the preferred alternative will widen Old 41 from two lanes to four lanes and add sidewalks, a shared-use path, and bicycle facilities. These improvements also include modifying the existing traffic signal at US 41 and Old 41 into a partial median U-turn, or P-MUT, intersection, allowing motorists a dedicated lane for U-turns. The proposed quadrant roadway will connect with Old 41 with Racetrack Road and will align the City of Benita Springs' plan to accommodate future travel demand and complete streets implementation. There are no improvements planned for the Old 41 north of the proposed new quadrant roadway, including the Old 41 and Benita Beach Road intersection. New traffic signals are proposed along Old US 41 at Veterans Memorial Boulevard, Railhead Boulevard, Via Palacio Avenue, Mediterranean Drive, and the new quadrant roadway to balance safety, access management, and operational needs. The preferred alternative also includes ponds for both floodplain compensation and stormwater management, which will be discussed later in the presentation. The preferred alternative for Old 41 results in widening Old 41 to a four-lane divided roadway with 11-foot travel lanes both northbound and southbound between US 41 and the new proposed quadrant roadway. The alternative includes bicycle lanes in both directions, a six-foot sidewalk, and a 10-foot shared-use path throughout Old 41 in the Collier County portion. The design speed is 45 miles per hour. The preferred alternative includes a seven-foot bicycle lane in both directions and a 12-foot shared-use path south of the new quadrant roadway in Benita Springs, Lee County. There are no improvements planned for Old 41 north of the proposed new quadrant roadway, including the Old 41 and Benita Beach Road intersection. The design speed is 45 miles per hour. For the quadrant roadway, the preferred alternative includes 11-foot travel lanes, a 12-foot shared-use path on the northwest side, and an eight-foot sidewalk on the southeast side within 70 feet of proposed right-of-way. The design speed is 30 miles per hour. Throughout this study, a no-build alternative is also considered. The no-build alternative assumes that no improvements are made to Old 41 through the year 45, except for routine maintenance. There are advantages and disadvantages to the no-build alternative. Advantages of the no-build alternative include: no additional cost, no construction impacts, no environmental impacts, no right-of-way required. The disadvantages include: does not meet the purpose and need, no improvements in emergency response times, no congestion relief, no safety improvements, no pedestrian facility upgrades, and no additional bicycle accommodations. The no-build alternative remains a valid option and will continue to be evaluated until the completion of this study. FDOT evaluated various environmental factors relating to the proposed improvements in accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969, as amended, and other federal requirements. The evaluation considered the effects of widening Old 41 on cultural and historic resources, threatened and endangered species, wetlands and floodplains, highway traffic noise, contamination, right-of-way requirements, sociocultural effects, land use, farmlands, water quality, air quality, and utilities. Several of these will be discussed further on the following slides. Please refer to your handout for more details. A cultural resource assessment survey was conducted in accordance with the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966 and Florida statutes. Archaeologists and historians identified no archaeological sites within the project area and no historic resources in the project area. However, 20 sites were recorded within one mile of the area potential effect. One resource is individually eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places, a newly identified segment of the Seminole Gulf Railway. The State Historic Preservation Office determined that there would be no adverse effect to the Seminole Gulf Railway from the proposed improvements on July 8th, 2025. Protected species and habitats are allowed special protections under the Endangered Species Act of 1973, as amended, and Florida statutes. FDOT assessed species within the project limits and through ongoing coordination with US Fish and Wildlife Service has determined that the proposed project may affect, but is not likely to adversely affect, the existence of certain federally listed threatened or endangered species. These species include the eastern indigo snake, wood stork, eastern black rail, Florida bonneted bat, and tri-colored bad. In addition, the project has no adverse effect, or no, yeah, no advice, no adverse effect anticipated on the following state-listed threatened or endangered species, including the Florida pine snake, gopher tortoise, Florida burrowing owl, Florida sandhill crane, little blue heron, southeastern American kestrel, big cypress fox squirrel, rosy at Spoonville, tri-colored heron, and various state-listed plants. Concurrents from US Fish and Wildlife Service regarding the final status of these species was received on October 14th, 2025. The FDOT will re-initiate consultation with US Fish and Wildlife Service during the design and permitting phase if the listing status of the monarch butterfly or tri-colored bad is elevated to threatened or endangered and the project falls within the consultation area. Consultation with FWC was initiated, and they had no comments on the proposed improvements. If the preferred alternative is approved by the Office of Environmental Management, FDOT District 1 will continue to work closely with the environmental agencies in future phases, such as design and construction, to meet all environmental permitting requirements. FDOT evaluated wetlands within the project limits in accordance with Executive Order 11990, Protection of Wetlands. The proposed improvements will affect approximately 5.44 acres of wetlands and 5.31 acres of other surface waters. The department will take all practical measures to minimize harm to the wetlands and will mitigate wetland impacts resulting in this project's construction to meet requirements of Florida statutes and the United States Code. The project has been evaluated for potential floodplain involvement in accordance with Executive Order 11988, Floodplain Management. Project impact air packs to the 100th floodplain are unavoidable due to the locations of the water bodies and low-lying areas where project widening must occur. There are six areas within the proposed project footprint where floodplain impacts will occur, resulting in approximately 33.14 acre-feet of floodplain impacts. Three off-site floodplain compensation sites were identified to compensate for the proposed impacts. There is no significant change in the flood risk, nor is there significant change in the potential for interruption or termination of emergency services or emergency evacuation routes due to flooding. The effects of traffic noise associated with the referred build alternative have been evaluated in accordance with Title III Code of Federal Regulations, Part 772, and with the FDOT PDNE manual. It was determined that the construction of a noise barrier is potentially feasible and cost-reasonable measured to reduce noise impacts to two impacted noise receptors, bear IDs 2 and 16. And a commitment will be made to study this further in the design phase. If you would like more information regarding traffic noise, please speak with our noise specialist at the noise information table. Results of the environmental screening, or contamination screening, showed that one site was ranked high for potential contamination. 11 sites were ranked medium for potential contamination, and 14 sites were ranked low for potential contamination. For the sites that are ranked low for contamination, no further action is required at this time. For the sites with a risk ranking of high or medium, the FDOT project manager and district contamination impact coordinator will coordinate on further actions during the design phase that must be taken to address contamination issues. Before construction, specially-trained crews will address contamination in these areas as required. Locations of these sites are shown on the concept plans here, or on display tonight. One of the avoidable consequences on a project such as this is the necessary relocation of residences or businesses. On this project, we anticipate the relocation of zero residences and up to 138 businesses. All right-of-way acquisition will be conducted in accordance with Florida Statute, Section 33909, and the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of 1970, commonly known as the Uniform Act. If you are required to make any type of move as a result of Department of Transportation projects, you can expect to be treated in a fair and helpful manner and in compliance with the Uniform Relocation Assistance Act. If a move is required, you will be contacted by an empraiser who will inspect your property. We encourage you to be present during the inspection and provide information about the value of your property. You may also be eligible for relocation advisory services and payment benefits. If you are being moved and you are unsatisfied with the department's determination of your eligibility for payment or the amount of that payment, you may appeal that determination. You will promptly be furnished necessary forms and notified of the procedures to be followed in making that appeal. A special word of caution: if you move before you receive notification of the relocation benefits that you might be entitled to, your benefits could be jeopardized. The details of the proposed right-of-way locations are shown on the concept boards. All proposed relocations are located in Collier County. The relocation specialists who are supervising this program are here tonight. They will be happy to answer your questions and will furnish you with copies of relocation assistance brochures. This project is not expected to change future land use patterns on Old 41, nor result in adverse impacts to farmlands, water quality, air quality, or utilities. Minimal construction effects are expected. An evaluation matrix showing the detailed comparison of the preferred alternative and the no-build alternative is provided in the project handout and is also on display here this evening. The matrix shows potential effects to the social, cultural, natural, and physical environment and identifies preliminary costs. The estimated cost to widen Old 41 from US 41 to Benita Beach Road includes $5.2 million for final design, $100.7 million for right-of-way acquisition for roadway and stormwater management areas, and $620,000 for wetland mitigation. The total estimated construction cost for the project is $108.3 million. The estimated cost for utility relocation and railroad construction is $4.5 million. The cost for construction engineering and inspection is estimated at $10.8 million. The department's preliminary estimate of the project's total cost is just over $280 million. At this time, FDOT's tentative five-year work program includes funding for the PDNE and design through the final, or through the final design. Design is funded for fiscal year 2028 in Lee County and FY 2027 in Collier County. Construction is not currently funded. The department anticipates completion of this PDNE study by summer 2026. The study schedule is on display here this evening. We encourage you to review project information here tonight and provide us your feedback. There are multiple ways to provide comment during the live in-person event by completing a speaker card and handing it to anybody with a name tag during the upcoming intermission, providing your comment to the court reporter at the comment table, by mail to the address shown on the slide, or by email or through the project website. All comments carry equal weight and should be submitted or postmarked by December 1st, 2025 to become a part of the formal hearing record. All hearing materials presented tonight are available to the public on the project webpage and will remain posted for your review. The technical documents are also available for review in person at the Benita Springs Public Library at 10560 Reynolds Street, Benita Springs, Florida, 34135, or the FDOT Southwest Area Office at 141 Daniels Parkway, Fort Myers, Florida, 33913, until December 1st, 2025. You may also visit the project website at www.swflroads.com/podrick/435110-1 for the latest study information, schedule, and upcoming events. This PDNE study is being conducted and completed according to the requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act and other related federal and state laws, rules, and regulations, which will qualify future phases of this project for federal funding, and this hearing was advertised consistent with those requirements. Please see the statute display board for all other applicable requirements. This hearing is also conducted in accordance with the Americans with Disability Act of 1990 and with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and related statutes. Anyone who feels that he or she has been discriminated against with regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status may complete one of the forms located at the sign-in table and mail the completed form to the address listed on the poster. And finally, an FDOT safety moment. Everyone has something to get home to. FDOT thanks you for making safety a continued priority. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Old 41 Project Development and Environment Study Public Hearing and for taking the time to join us this evening.
Okay, in a moment, we will have a 10-minute intermission, so you can review the displays, talk with members of the project team, and ask any questions that you may have before we begin the testimony portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a verbal comment here tonight, please fill out a speaker card, give it to anyone with a name tag during the intermission. If you do not wish to speak at the microphone, you may provide your comments in writing or directly to the court reporter at the comment table. All comments are weighted equally. The time is 6:36. We will resume at 6:46.
Before online attendees break for intermission, I want to go over again how you can make a formal verbal comment online. We will use the chat or question function on the control panel to request to speak. If you are on a computer, your control panel is to the right. If it is minimized, click the orange arrow to expand it. The question box is near the bottom of the control panel. On a tablet or phone, you can open this by clicking the question mark on the control panel that is either across the top or bottom of your screen. If you happen to have any technical difficulties, please visit support.goto.com for help. If you would like to make a comment during the formal testimony portion, please type your name, your organization if any, and your address in this box. We will call in you to speak during the testimony portion. We will now go ahead with the intermission and begin again at 6:46 PM.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now begin the public testimony portion of the hearing. We welcome your spoken and written comments that would help us make this important decision. The comment period for this hearing will remain 10 days after this hearing. Anyone wishing to submit written statements or other exhibits in place of or in addition to verbal statements may do so. You have until December 1st, 2025 to postmark or submit comments to become part of the official hearing transcript. Again, every comment carries equal weight. Please see your handout, the display boards, or the project webpage for contact and mailing information. Now I'm gonna say this real slow. We will not be responding to questions or comments at this time. Our focus tonight is recording your verbal comments. However, we will post summary of the comments received on the project webpage approximately 30 days following the close of the comment period. If you would like to have additional discussion regarding the project, you may contact the FDOT project manager, Stephen Andrews, myself. FDOT project manager, Stephen Andrews, myself, at the information listed on your handout or on the webpage. In-person speakers, please direct all comments clearly into the microphone and toward the hearing moderator at all times. This will ensure your comments are captured accurately for the project record. Please limit your comment to three minutes. A project staff member will signal when you have one minute left, and they will raise their hand a second time to signal when your time is up. Once again, we are not responding to questions or comments during testimony. We will now call on those who have registered to speak in person. When called upon, please come forward, state your name, your address, and if you represent any organization or municipality or other public body. We will start with Eric Myberg.
Seeing that we don't have questions, can't do questions, I will phrase them differently instead of questions, but saying that there are two items that are not included in this, and the one is the incorporation of the rail track into the boat rail thing that should be clearly addressed to say at the time when the design is done, consideration should be given for the impact of that at the intersection and the rail crossing there. The second one is that the current multi-use path that is going to go on the west side of Old Forty-One terminates at the new quadrant road, and that should be continued. It should not stop there. It should continue to Benita Beach Road to give uniformity and flow of pedestrians and bicycles and whatever else goes onto a multi-use path. So please include those in the design from the quadrant road up to Benita Beach Road. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Doug T. Doug Fee, sorry.
I live in Collier County and on Wiggins Pass Road, which is in the general vicinity. I would echo what that gentleman said, which is complete the sidewalks, the shoulders, all the way up to Benita Beach Road, because as we all know, there are a lot of pedestrians who travel that way, whether it's from Benita down to Collier or Collier up to Benita. It needs to be holistically looked at, okay? The second thing is in the design or in the construction cost of two hundred and thirty-eight, thirty million, how much of the right-of-way acquisition, which says one hundred million, goes to acquiring these one hundred or affecting these one hundred and thirty-eight businesses, which I assume is for ponding for water management, tear down the buildings and put water there? Why is the FDOT not considering that Collier County itself owns fifty-five acres in the general vicinity of the railroad track by Conservation Collier, the taxpayers? We paid for it. Why would you spend money to affect business owners in this area and not use county land that is already there that can be used for the public benefit? I mean, I'm not against environment, of course, but this isn't saving lives. This is saving businesses, saving economics. There's already land, and why wasn't it considered in this proposal so that it would lower the cost of two hundred and thirty million? I'd like to know how much FDOT has to pay for these one hundred and thirty-eight businesses that should not be affected by a roadway expanding, okay? There's gotta be land in the area so that that wouldn't be necessary. Anyways, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else attending in person who has not spoken but would like to speak?
I just want to speak up as a small business owner on Old Forty-One Road in Naples. My name is Danielle, Danielle Grant, and I am Boganum European Automotive, been in business six years in a building that is only seven years old, and it is extremely frightening to me to hear that I might be one of the one hundred and thirty-eight businesses displaced. I don't even own, I have leased there, so I don't even know. Wait, can you hear the tremor in my voice? It's very scary to me. Not at all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else? Now we will call upon those attending online who signed up to speak.
First, we will call upon Salvador Coco. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address, and if you represent an organization, municipality, excuse me, or other public body. Mr. Coco, if you would like to speak, you need to unmute yourself so we can hear you.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. So, yes, Salvador Coco, I live in Gateway in Fort Myers, but we have a ownership in the north part of Old Forty-One in the Coastway Complex, and the only thing I see is basically that this area is considered medium to high contamination site, so just would like to know what this mean at what, yeah, and eventually which consequences are there for the sites highlighted with this characteristics, this triangle. That's, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else attending online who has not spoken but would like to speak? Seeing no one, we will return to our in-person moderator to close out the hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone, again, who has not, who is attending in person, has not spoken, would like to speak? Going once, twice. All right. Once again, written statements and exhibits in place of or in addition to verbal statements will be accepted and recorded as part of this hearing if postmarked or sent by ten days after this hearing on December first, two thousand and twenty-five. After the comment period closes, the project team will compile all comments and together with engineering and environmental work that has been done, make a final recommendation that will be submitted to the FDOT Office of Environmental Management Office for approval. We will publish the approval of the preferred alternative in the Naples Daily News and Fort Myers News Press and post the approval on the project webpage. The verbatim transcript of this hearing proceedings, together with all written statements or exhibits received and all studies displaced and informational material presented here with this hearing, will be made part of the project decision-making process and will be available for public review upon request at FDOT District Headquarters One, eight oh one North Broadway Avenue, Bartow, Florida, three three eight three zero. Thank you for attending this public hearing and for providing your input into this project. It is now seven o'clock on the dot. I hereby officially close the public hearing for Old Forty-One PDNE study from US forty-one in Collier County to Benita Beach Road in Lee County, Florida. Thank you again. Stay safe and have a good evening.